At 3:01. And is Sean coming or not?
No, she's on vacation. I'll be keeping her.
All right, so we're gonna open up with privilege of the floor.
No, you're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda, Wendy? Oh, you're part of Windsor Hill, not part of the agenda. All of you guys Windsor Hill. All right, well, if you like, we could skip around and go right to Windsor Hill.
I'll be fine with that.
Okay. Let's talk about Windsor Hill.
How do you want to start, Mark?
Well, they have the information that I've given them in their packets. John notified me on Monday that they had a number from Dana and they wanted to move ahead with the repaving of the parking lots in Windsor Hill. Starting next Monday and completing the work by by or before the 4th of July weekend. We had Dana White revise his proposal
Okay.
to do the water line replacement, which was the town part of this project. And that number, that revised number, which we appropriated money from Fund Balance to potentially do. We, the estimate that we have from Dana White is $71,000.
All right, so how are we getting to 71, I've got 54 and four is 58.
Well, that is with excavation material. If you look at the number that he has on cubic yards of, he has a $19 per cubic yard cost.
Right.
And Jim did a rough estimate of the number of yards that he estimates we would have to use.
And how many is that? See, I'm just, I don't know what these adds go to. You're giving me that, so there's a magic mix that gives us another $13,000.
That's correct. And that is based on that is based on somewhere between 435 cubic yards and 622 cubic yards. If it's 435,000 or 435 cubic yards, it's $8,275. And if it's 622, then it's 11,822. So we went in between those at around $10,000. So we have 54 plus approximately 10 is 64, say 65. There is the 23, the $4,150 and the $2,350, which is replacing the hydrant at J Building.
Right.
And alternative four, which is a two-inch trench paving.
Okay, now are we doing that if they're doing paving?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is a section that they've already, that they have already paved that we will have to replace the pavement on. That's the $2,350.
Okay.
That's already, and that's, why do we have to replace it?
Thank you.
Well, because they've already paved it.
Right.
But why is it up to why we? We're cutting it, where the pipe goes through an area where they have already paved.
Is this the end of the pipe or in the middle of the pipe?
No, it's in the middle of the pipe.
Okay. Okay.
So all of that totaled up to the $71,000 number.
Okay, the question I have, because I know this has been sprung in us in the interest of time because we weren't aware you guys were going this quickly. Well, that does not do us much, much good. The question I have is, these costs that are in here, how do these correspond to previous work Dana has done for the town? Are we, what were we paying a cubic yard on past projects? This insulation, if we've done it, what were we paying? Because my concern is, because we don't have time if we're going to approve this and go ahead with this, to put this out to bid.
Sure.
No, I'm talking about the town with using Dana for other projects. With, you know, doing water lines and things like that and the T-bends from the last stuff.
The $4,150 on hydrant replacement is right in line with what he has charged us the previous two years for excavation and the installation of, the only thing we can compare it to is the meter pits. And it's right in line with
If I, if I could point out to the board, we did, prior to, for budget purposes, during the budget process, we did get an estimate for budget purposes. And his estimate was right around $65,000 without material. Pipe and fittings and that type of thing. So I would say that it came in well under the original budget estimate.
Okay.
A blast fall.
And we're not doing the insulation. And we are not doing the six-inch gate valves.
Okay, so we don't have any, alternate one goes away?
And alternate three goes away.
Why are we not doing insulation? Why would you recommend not doing it considering we've had water line freezing?
Because we have not had an issue with freezing on this particular line. It's in good material. It's six to seven feet down. So it's
Specified six feet of cover.
Right. So we, and there's no problem with bedding material or anything in this particular area. There's no ledge or anything.
Except how much is the cost? We're talking about what, 600 feet here? Times seven dollars?
$4,200. So I mean, we eliminated it because we didn't see a need to do it. I mean, we certainly, we certainly can add it in, but it would take the $71,000 up to about $75,000.
I know, I got you, I got you. I'm just, no, Bill makes the point with that, but. Just a question. Yeah. Okay. Now, but I had understood the question here that we're wrestling with. It's not so much Dana's estimate, right?
Right.
But wouldn't we have the money?
That's, that's correct.
Whether we have problems we have with having to repair water and sewer lines.
That's right. It leaves us 50, it leaves us, as I said in the memo, it leaves us $50,000 approximately, if we were to commit to doing this.
Doing this, it leaves us
It leaves us approximately $50,000 in their care account.
We authorized 100 at town meeting, correct?
We authorized $140,000 at town meeting. We had approximately $8,000 left over from the account. In the account at the start of it.
Right.
That gave us $148,000. We currently have approximately $125,000 after all of what we have done over the winter because we have, we have pumped the septic tanks. We have, we have tried to unfreeze lines manually. We have had excavation. We've had the heating of Cascade Ridge.
So you've got right now 120.
Approximately 125 left. So that's where I came up, you know, I rounded, I did round because we have a few bills that are still out there. Okay, so if you take the couple of bills that we have left to pay, the $71,000, it leaves us approximately $50,000 in that account right now.
How much in the account?
About $50,000 if we were to commit to doing Windsor. Approximately 125 minus a couple of bills. So I figured 121,000.
Now, let me ask you a question, Mark.
Yep.
Is it, is there a reason why we must take funds to work on the, to repair water and sewers out of this account? Or do we just need to come up with the money anyplace out of the spending budgets this year?
We have $40,000 in contingency, which we have not touched yet.
Right.
That's in the overall town contingency account. So that's your, the board's money to use.
But you can, we can spend that, we can spend it to do this kind of work.
Absolutely. And then you have, you have $155,000, which was specifically appropriated to repair Jennings Peak and Noon Peak Road, right? Paving.
Right.
You could hold a public hearing and change the purpose. You have the authority because it's a cash account. It's not a bond, okay? You can hold the Board of Selectmen if it's a cash account. Because we've done this before. To hold a public hearing, you can move money from one cash account to another. We've, we've done it on several occasions.
So I even should have asked this question. Does that mean we could take the $40,000 out of the generator and apply it to this?
No, that was a grant. That was a grant.
No. We're matching, we're matching portion of it. It was 40 of our money, 40 of their money. Was that a cash item? Or what are the other cash items? Let me ask it that way. I don't wanna, I don't even wanna go there.
We have 15,000.
Because I'm sore of the subject business.
We have 15,000 for the sidewalks. We have approximately 11,000 for lighting. We have 24,000 for vehicle replacement.
And if we underspend the operating budget, we can use that money as well.
And any amount of underspending.
But our 15,000 for the sidewalk, I thought that was locked as dedicated. And that's why we repurposed a whole bunch of accounts at the end of last year.
No, those are all cash.
I thought it was too, but now I'm hearing something that you're saying only the bonded ones.
Only the bonded ones.
Ones are the ones that we can't change the purpose.
I thought we couldn't change the purpose of any of these.
I told you to check the purpose of any of these. Well, you learn something new every day. All right. Okay. So let's now shift gears and let's talk about the water problems up on Bean Bender Road and the sewage problems out on the North End. Do we have any even estimate of what it would cost?
We have one, we have one possible solution for the water line, which is to dig the entire line up, excavate everything, and wrap it with an electric heat tape, basically.
What happened to the suggestion that you could thread them?
Well, we don't have those numbers yet. We're still waiting for those numbers.
Do we thread them, is that inserting the heating unit in the line?
Heating filaments in the line. We don't have that cost estimate yet.
Who, who is at least a reasonable authority on doing this? Is this, do we even know that this might work or is it just?
We have found four, four vendors who claim to do this. We're trying to get numbers from them. Find out if the length of our runs are possible. But the systems do exist for sewer and for water lines.
But here's the question that we discussed before Bill got here. The length of the runs could be an issue.
I understand that the length of runs on the sewer could be an issue, but in here on the water.
Well, the water line is, is almost 400 feet. It's 375, 380 feet. Most of these are domestic water and sewer applications on these filaments that go inside the pipe. So I don't know if there is a limit to the length of the run that they can cover. And that's the information we're trying to get now.
So we're pretty much sure that we don't know?
We don't know. Absolutely.
But you have an estimate to dig up the road.
But I have an estimate for one option, which is digging up the water line on Cascade Ridge and putting an external heat tape on it.
And how much was that?
That's $37,000.
But that, that's providing, providing they have a six-inch clearance to get around the pipe. If they hit ledge, we don't know what's going to happen.
If they hit ledge, it'll be, it would be more than the $37,000. If I'm saying anything wrong.
Six inches, six inches is your standard bedding, your minimum bedding depth.
Okay. And our best guess now on the sewer would be that we're going to have to install another manhole cover.
We may have to, if, if the runs of these electrical filaments are too short, we would have to put another manhole.
Sewer.
Right now, what CMA engineers has proposed is to change the fittings in each of the existing manholes with quick disconnects, basically.
Okay.
That we would be able to hook a hose onto and pressurize the line. And that we would do that in the spring and the fall to clean out the pipe, which they feel will help prevent freezing. And then if we start to have problems or periodically, whatever we want to do, we can hook up the truck, basically, to the lines and blow them out.
Do we have a ballpark on that at all?
A ballpark on, a cost on that? No, I don't have those numbers.
But that doesn't require a lot, that requires someone to go in the manhole and changing some fittings. And if it's eight fittings at a thousand dollars a fitting. But ten problems, yeah. From what we now know, I mean, I don't disagree with doing that at all. But I don't see how that's gonna solve the problem of the line freezing.
It, it does not take
Unless you went out there every week and questioned it.
And that's what I've told them I don't want to get into. Is a mandated period, you know, you gotta go out there every three or four days or whatever it is.
And pressurize the line to move it.
No, we can't sustain that for the whole winter. That's not realistic. So, you know, and then they're also talking about glycol and some other additives that we could introduce into the line, but then how do you do that? Because a lot of the property owners are not there full-time. There's a lot of issues still that we would need to overcome.
The basic, the basic issue remains, there is no sustained usage of that line. That's the problem.
That's right. And so, so the interior heating device, the inline heating device, I think is the best solution if we can make it work. But I have no idea what that cost is going to be.
Okay, got it. So, so let's, you're saying that the Bean Bender, although I, well, for 40,000 and maybe the other ones less, we could fix that. No, no, we're not saying we can fix it for, for 40,000, they open it up.
No.
And then we open it up and repair it. If we run into a thing where this whole, that whole line is sitting on ledge.
It could be more than 40,000. That's all I worry about is we don't know what the bedding material is on that wall.
But when you opened up the first time
When they opened it up the first time.
You had a lot of problems getting the wrapper on it because it was all sitting on ledge. I hate to ask this and you probably don't know. Were there any specifications at the point in time he put those lines in? When the planning board approved that? Were there specifications that dealt with what those lines were supposed to have been done?
Our regulations laid out the
So if, so we would not have allowed him to lay the pipe on ledge?
No, we were not, but we did not have any inspectors there for the entire time that the construction was going on.
Understood, but the specification would not have allowed him to lay it on ledge.
It requires
So that if it is laid on ledge and we've gotta go back, we would have some course to go back and possibly recover the money from Cantland.
Potentially.
If, if the work was done improperly. Yeah? Right. Could be ugly, but Who was the installer, was it Piper?
Well, but it's the contractor. It's the developer.
All right.
And that was all done on prior property that came over installed. The town didn't take it all until
Right, we didn't assume maintenance of that whole thing until
I understood, I understand that, that's why I asked you the question. Were there specifications that dealt with how he was supposed to? Because I know we passed this on the basis that that water line and sewer lines met quote town standard.
That's correct.
So if it met town standard, you know, they imply that there's some standard. Okay, gotcha. Good, I was wondering if there was any recourse on Well, it would be if it was done improperly. Oh, no, no, I got you now, where before I
I just worry that, I mean, even with the heat tape, we do, none of this is guaranteed to keep that line from freezing. I mean, it's definitely gonna be better than what we currently have. But again, it's not, nothing, none of these, none of these solutions are
There's no, but we've got, I don't care what we're doing.
We've gotta take some steps.
We need to keep trying. Well, no, I mean, we've taken a piece of property that's owned by two people up there. And we've basically, as a result of where we sit right now, those properties are worth nothing. How can you sell a house? You gotta tell the guy, well, the water's intermittent in the winter at best. I mean, I don't care what we, we've gotta keep hammering away until we find a solution to this problem. It's unacceptable to say that you can't have water in your house. I mean, what's he gonna do, dig a well? All right. So the question is, are we gonna run out of money, right? Well, we might. We might. We might because of these special circumstances.
That's right.
Through no fault. Now, let me go back to the Windsor Hill. Originally, when we did the Windsor Hill, we did it under the suspicion that the line is in bad shape.
Well, no, we've repaired, this is one of the lines that's
I know, we've repaired multiple breaks on it. And that we think the line is in bad shape.
Yes.
Is there any way to have Dana, you know, just dig a couple of test holes, find a thing and confirm that in the course of doing this, we'll pay him to do it? But at least take a look and, you know, render a judgment as to whether, hey, no, now we'll look at it, it don't look so bad. Or this is horrendous.
Well, I, I think we, we've exposed it three different times, four times. We have dug up sections of it.
Yeah.
So we've seen the pipe.
So it needs to be, you're saying, your judgment needs to be done. Would be Jim's, what do you think, Jim?
Well, the pipe itself, to the age of it, is not in that bad a shape. It was the installation of the pipe that broke the pipe.
Right.
So can we say that we've got those four spots where we've repaired, where improper installation led to a broken water main? And there are no more spots?
No, I got you.
You know, I have no idea.
So we've got a, I think we've got a, you know, we've got a choice. If we think that line, either we roll the dice and take a chance on the line, not failing.
That's right.
Or we fix the line and commit ourselves to holding off spending everything we can until we answer these other questions. And then find out where the hell we're gonna fund this stuff from and, you know.
I think we can. I think that's, I would hate to have them spend tens of thousands of dollars in Windsor Hill repaving the parking lots. And then have us up there with water coming through the new pavement in the fall because we have another break. I just, you know, I would ask them not to pave if we can't, you know, if we don't agree to go forward. I'd ask them not to pave just to
To mow it because we don't know.
Yeah, we can.
He wouldn't like that, that's a question.
Yeah, I think that a pressing matter for us too is a nice low cost of oil right now, which is part of the reason we're wanting to go forward. It's making us that we can do like the entire stretch. That's not completely at first, we thought we'd only do two-thirds of what we needed to do. So that's part of our
Right now, that estimate allows us to do the whole remaining parking lot. Because the cost of oil has come down. If we wait a year, it's a crapshoot, but we'll still be able to afford it.
And then the cubic, the quantities are gonna change as well because there's some economic benefit to both of us doing these projects at the same time.
And I understand that. No landscaping, no tree clearing? Are we planning on hitting any trees, taking the trees out or any bushes?
We are not replacing any trees or doing any landscaping, okay?
Is that accurate, that this is not gonna
We're in the parking lot, so it should be all areas that you guys are working on anyway, right?
It's an open, clear area.
Okay. So that's why we don't have any money in our budget for that. Because the $71,000 is with no contingency at all. I mean, that's just the cubic yard price.
You say things were improperly installed. Now, I see ledge in here. Are they, are, do we have sections that are put over ledge? I know we had some issues on Greeley Hill Road with tree stumps and things.
Right. There is a section, there was one break, I forget the building. Yeah. Yeah, the one, the upper one, before it goes up to North Coast. There was, there was ledge in there, but that's about at the end of our excavation.
No, I'm just asking, I didn't wanna see, you know, seeing a huge ledge thing for another $20,000.
There was one, there was one, that break in there was caused by ledge. Pipe resting on ledge. But there was no ledge, per se, at any of the other break sites.
No, I just don't know nothing about this.
Can we raise it up a little bit and insulate and
Just a short run and it's, you know.
We can address that.
Very few dollars.
What do you think, though? Well, my, my things tells me go ahead and do the pipe. And we'll just hold up spending on everything else as long as we can on any kind of discretionary item that we've got right now. Just hold it for a while until we can get estimates of what it's gonna take. I, to me, the priority has to be to get that sewer and water line function. And, but it seems to me we've got enough flexibility to do that, take a risk on this if they're gonna go ahead and do that.
Yeah, and, yeah. And the one thing I, the paving that I would like to commit to as part of this, because we are talking between now and July 4th, is Jennings Peak, that end? Because we wanna match in
Where Jennings Peak comes out.
Where Jennings Peak comes out to Valley Road.
Just the bottom up to Windsor Hill?
That's correct. Up to Windsor Hill. Because, because that's all paved and drains all together.
How much is that?
That's 70, that's 70,000 that we've
Out of the money.
Out of the money.
So to do that shortage.
Well, there's, there's
Several structures
Several structures that we have to replace. And there's culverts that we have to replace. So that was all planned to be done at the same time that Windsor Hill was being done.
So out of this 155, we lose another 70. So we don't From the standpoint of Dana, because I know we had said, well, let's see if we're gonna do Jennings Peak, let's go ahead and do Noon Peak, he's got the equipment up here, blah, 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 all of that stuff.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, now, if he starts on Windsor Hill and Jennings Peak, I mean
We'll have enough time to get the numbers together and make a decision before noon. Yeah, I don't think there'll be any problem with that, Jim.
No. Yeah, we've got to figure out a course of action on the other
I hope to have the numbers for you at the next meeting. I wanna, we don't wanna let this sit, we wanna get the numbers.
All right. Would anyone like to propose that we, anybody else with another comment? Anybody guys wanna say, let's not do it? I don't know if we have to, do we have to have a motion? Do we need a motion? Do we have to accept this proposal? You have to I'll make a motion to accept the Dana White proposal. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right. Approval of the minutes. I didn't see really Well, it's gonna be, the problem with approving the minutes is it takes two votes. And I wasn't here, so I can't Good, because I went over them twice and I think that's right. I didn't find any spelling mistakes or anything grammatically. Table that. But I do have a question about the minutes.
Yeah.
And having read them. The section on the generator, can somebody enlighten me as to what we've now committed to? We've committed to go ahead with the project. Is that what that statement says? And what, what Margaret and I both researched, and we were hoping you'd call in, was that as far as the answers, we had
And, what, what Margaret and I both researched, and we were hoping you'd call in, was that as, as far as the answers, we had bid the project out. And we went with Wenzel, who was our low bidder, to get the supplemental bids. And when Mark came back and Chris was here and Dave was here, the questions that Margaret and I had for them was, does this bid, this dol, these dollars, bring us up to complete code? And everything, or no additional add-ons? And there seemed to be eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Eight hundred and ninety dollars in additional funds to bring everything to code, to bring us to a twenty-two thousand fifteen running system and all that, and that's how.
In, alright, let me go on.
Yeah.
In the previous minutes.
Yeah.
So, the previous meeting, if you go back and read the generator, it clearly states in there.
Yeah.
That not only was it to meet code, but it was to add additional capacity. How much additional capacity?
Twenty percent.
Is it twenty percent increase, so we're going from four hundred amp service to four hundred eighty amp service?
No, what we are doing.
Yeah.
Is the, the number of, the number of breakers, okay, will be increased by twenty percent. New Hampshire Electric Co-op has told us that the service coming into the building, if we were to fill those twenty breakers with new, like, say, an expansion of the building or whatever? And we use those twenty breakers, the service coming into the building will handle whatever amperage is required. They can provide the, the electricity to service those twenty breakers. So, we have twenty percent additional capacity for new fixtures or, or whatever the service calls for. The Co-op has said.
So, he's installing new panel boxes?
He is putting in a new panel box with twenty new breakers.
So, when this project is done, there's going to be light space for twenty new breakers sitting in it.
That's correct.
Twenty percent more.
Twenty percent more, yes, I'm sorry, twenty percent more, yes. Thank you.
Does that cover the service line? You're quite busy this.
No, I wanna take care of your question. I wanna make sure we've addressed it, because, because we specified that we had that, the generator that we are installing will handle a hundred and twenty percent of our current use in this entire building, okay?
I don't think that's what Bill's asking.
Well, no, no.
My concern, my concern is nothing to do with this generator.
No, I know.
It has strictly to do with the fact that you've got antiquated electrical panels, and all those panels getting replaced with new stuff.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, and you're sure of this, because that's what I'm gonna go to look at when this work is done.
New panels?
They've already started.
New panels and an additional panel.
Alright, yeah, you've got the money to do this now, because what we voted today was, we said, you know, we ought to be careful about spending money here.
Right, that's correct.
As, as.
Go ahead.
Nope, as Margaret and I took this on and understood, let me give you how, what we, that this whole thing is new state of the art. Done, everything remedied, not Mickey Mouse, not patchwork wired.
And that's what we.
With a total additional cost of four hundred and fifty dollars, of twenty-four thousand.
That's what we told Wes. That's right.
And we were assured that at the meeting, and that's why we voted on.
That's what he said.
Terrific.
Was gonna be done.
I look forward to seeing it.
Okay.
When it's done.
Okie dokie. Uh, financial update.
Uh, no departments are having any issues at the present time. We are, the only issues, or any departments that are over expended are because of timing of bill payments. Um, especially like the cemeteries being at fifty-two percent. Uh, nothing else is really had an issue at this point.
Alright.
Spending wise.
Spending wise, yep.
What's the, I don't know whether you're gonna talk about this later, what's the status update in terms of, we budgeted for the IT position for the year.
Yep.
Now, we basically don't have any buddy.
We, we just, as of yesterday, have a part-time person.
Part-time person.
We have a conditional offer with, I have a meeting with him tomorrow. Um, but that, that will be for twenty hours a week, twenty-five hours a week.
Yeah, I, I would just think that, again, until we get the estimates and we know where we are with this water sewer account.
Yep.
That we don't move forward with vice versa, the full-time position.
Oh, no, 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 we.
We need to try to find ways to make sure we save against the current budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll move on from that. Department heads.
Hello.
Hi, Brooke.
Hi, um, let's see, the gym floor is done, pickleball lines are in, and the pickleball players are all very happy about that. There's also, we're some cubbies installed, um, which are really great, huge improvement from what we had before. Uh, that was, that was in our budget for this year, and that's done. The fishing derby, we've acquired, um, our sponsors, the T-shirts are being made. We're having wildlife encounters here this year, uh, doing kind of a live interactive wild, um, animal show, which would be cool. Uh, brochures, as you see, are out, and we're working on distributing those. Uh, it's also uploaded on the website. We have kind of a small staff right now, kind of daunting thinking about the whole weekend boat before all the kids come back, but, um, I think we are able to cover all that. The finalizes, um, finalizing of the staffing is happening, and, uh, staff orientation agenda is opening. And we're designing new camp forms, we're taking pre-registration, as you see in the brochure. In the past, it's always been a first come, first served. And it, we're having that this year, but we're also having pre-registration, so now we're having to make all these forms and paperwork to send out in advance of camps so people can sign up. We're already fielding lots of inquiries about wanting to sign up.
Right.
Uh, the boats are, are out, I'm sure you saw those.
Did.
Jim helped me with that, that was great, um, and his skies. Um, I'm also on the pedestrian study planning group, and I volunteered to help put together sort of a nature trail along the village trail that connects actually all the way to here. Um, Jim and, and Chris helped walk me through it, and we saw a bunch of really cool areas, and trying to put together maybe some plaques and something, things that we can notice about largeville valleys and historical points and trees and different things that we could cut along that. And the bus glass is fixed.
I very pardon the last one.
Bus glass door has been fixed.
Oh, the bus, yeah. Um, you know, it did remind me about the nature trail thing. At one time, we used to have an exercise trail.
Fitness trail.
Fitness trail that ran through, I guess, mostly forest service property.
No, town, it was all green though.
The green though. Are you, you're, you're aware of that? I mean, it would seem to me that that trail might be an interesting, I don't think we use it as a fitness thing anymore, it's just a nature trail.
What's the bridges one, basically, we stopped dealing?
Is that the problem, is it?
Well, structures got really like splintery and rocky.
Well, I know that, I was just thinking about, before we make a new nature trail, maybe we could just.
No, this is the same drift.
It's not a new trail, we're talking about.
The mountainist also volunteered to come in with their machinery and level it off and get rid of the big rocks, and it's gonna be more walkable.
Yeah, so as a part of this, I guess we're a committee, is that like a committee of some sort, I don't know. But we, um, I've just, as a group effort, I'm just gonna try to, um, pin up like what the points of interest might be, you know, and different people doing different things, this existing trail that we're just gonna try to make into a nice, um, a nice trail for people to use.
Okay, yeah, it's basically from the dam.
The village trail.
Down, down through Snow's Brook Road, and then down to the new pedestrian bridge. That whole trail.
Okay.
Will be basically just leveled and, and cleaned up, so it's more usable.
And maybe actually out to here.
And then back up, back up around, back up around the treatment plant and.
Yeah.
And down, yeah.
That's what we're hoping to extend it to there, so, and put down new material, um, to make it just more friendly for strollers and different things.
Great. And your staffing is gonna be all set for the summer? You got a lot of kids coming back?
I do, I have, I have a lot of kids coming back, I have some new hires. Um, one of my focuses this year is for the, um, camp counselors to be, um, there's a, a number of camp counselors I've hired that are in the early childhood development path, um, trying to get sort of some, um, some folks on that path to be the counselors. And we also have returning counselors, and then we have our waterfront and, you know, all of it, so we've got a combination.
Great. Anything else?
No.
And pickleball, which is moving.
They're happy, yeah. I mean, they're actually, you know, they've been kind of slow, um, and, but they're all very excited about pickleball line.
And the native passes are selling?
They are, we're, um, not, they haven't been, they haven't been selling as of, you know, lately, really after spring break, or, yeah, spring break. But we're expecting it to become a really big, you know, kind of growing paying piece this summer, because a lot of our, all of the things offered here have a discount if you have your native ID. So, we're gonna be collecting a lot of, you know, if they, we have a form for it now, we're gonna have to start, you know, thinking about the time that that's gonna take, input this information and, um, so that's something I think is gonna be coming, you know, soon.
Great.
Um, added a couple of new programs, we have a, a running club, we call it Mad River Running Club, so, and we have a volunteer that's gonna be running that for us. Um, a kayaking class, I'm gonna offer a weekly introduction to kayaking, um, on Sundays, so we have a, a couple of new programs too that are in here.
So, let me ask you a, a question here about the discounts and native pass, and I'm sure you've run into this before. But, uh, this is just something, well, it's real to me.
Yeah.
So, my grandkids come and stay with me.
Yep.
My grandchildren.
Yep.
Alright, and, um, I wanna, I sign them up for the camp.
Yep.
I sign them up, not their parents.
Right.
What rate do you charge them?
Um, I will charge, I will ask you to pay for the native ID for, for their kids, because.
Okay.
If you brought them to Open Gym.
Right.
You brought your grandkids to Open Gym, then I would just let you go, and there would be no charge whatsoever, because you are bringing your kids, their grandkids, to Open Gym.
Right.
If your children brought their kids to it, then we would expect them to.
No, no, yeah, but.
You're asking about, if you sign them up for summer camp, you've called.
If I sign them up, I pay the bill and I bring them.
Well, I think that's a conversation to have, but my instinct, my instinct is to say, um, are, are the parent, you know, are this parent, because you really can't sign them up, honestly. Because this whole information sheet is a waiver of liability, you're not, you're not authorized to like.
Good, right, alright.
So, that's, that's the catch right there.
So, the parents really do need to sign them.
Yes.
Okay.
And that will happen, I'm sure of it.
Oh, it's gonna happen a lot.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just curious whether you have an answer.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, it's fine.
And, and all the support I can get from, you know, all of us.
You know, I, obviously you're prepared, you're gonna get some pushback.
Yep.
I mean, you guys are okay with that being the policy?
And the.
I think it's only, is if their parents have to fill out the form, that's gonna be the link that's gonna make it. If the pa, if grandparents cannot register their grandchildren without a parent's signature.
Yeah.
Then I think we're okay, but, um.
Well, this is a town policy thing, so.
But we're gonna run, we're gonna run into that too.
I, I think this is the fairest way.
You're gonna run into that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I think this is the fairest way to, if we're gonna make the native ID pass thing work.
No, but I mean.
We have to be.
This is the, that's the consistency.
Oh, no, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I just, you're gonna have the, the mom, mom and dad went to Montreal for the weekend.
Yeah.
Right, and I think. They, they, they dropped them off, and you can't. You can't get a parent's signature.
And here's an answer to that, these forms can be uploaded off the website, they can be signed by the parent, they can be sent in. Um, it's not something that has to be done for every camp, so there are ways that you are gonna have the parents emotionally sign the form.
Somehow. Somehow, we want to make an effort, some kind of an effort somewheres, whether it's put the information on a website or something. That, that only a parent can sign, that their child can, can sign the waiver of liability form for a child to attend. I know, I run into this with the mountain, but, you know, but the truth is, in the ski mountain, they let me sign it after a while, I mean, stupid on their part, but.
Okay, so can I bring up something that we don't have to like talk to death right now, but on that note, when you come into the rack right now, and you were to bring your grandchild into the rack, the sign-in sheet also functions as the waiver of liability for our facility. Very often, grandparents will sign that waiver, because the parent's not there. They're not actually authorized to sign that. And that is something that's so, you know, caught in, on one end, it's really something which worth looking at, is my point.
What is the consequence if a child got injured and the wrong party signed?
You know, they say a waiver is something that's saving you. Um, I think ultimately, a waiver is close to useless in, in the court of law. But it's showing that we are taking it seriously, and that we are showing that we care, you know, that we're trying to keep everyone as safe as possible, and, you know, doing everything we can. But I don't think it actually holds up in court.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna find any consequence in court unless you're totally negligent.
Right.
Right.
And even if they do sign a waiver, if you're negligent, they're still on that.
Yeah, no, I, I, but, but I'm wondering whether we should try to get to a policy where essentially says, like, like the mountain. You sign a single waiver of liability, it's gotta be signed by the parent, they'll keep it on file.
Yeah.
And, and I've been down this road with, as a department head for other places, and I'll tell you what, what that entails, is an electronic system, okay? You go in, like, for example, there's a new climbing gym in Concord that opened up two and a half years ago. You come in, the first thing you do is you go to this little laptop thing that they had set up, okay? And you just, you, you lock, you, whatever, it's very easy, you just sign your name, and you sign the, the waiver, that's the last time you deal with that. And I've also worked in a department where every time, you come in every once a year, you have to sign a paper waiver.
Good, yeah.
Buy a box, it's a box, and a box, and a waiver.
To get to be friends with the new IT guy.
Yeah, so I think that's worth, going forward, I think we need to consider that and that cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
To keep us, you know.
But isn't there a waiver when you, as acknowledgement to buying the native pass, it's a waiver?
No.
That's, well, why don't we do that as well?
So, that would be a place where you, you would sign a waiver.
When you buy.
It wouldn't catch everyone, but that is a good.
It wouldn't catch everyone that says.
Well, I guess my, my question to Chris, let's say that you had your grandchildren up there and, and your kids were in Montreal, okay? Up at the mountain, and they were injured skiing. Can, can they release for medical purposes? How would you handle that?
Not easily, the hospital will call.
Hospital is gonna call the parents.
Okay.
But if you can't get a hold of the parents.
Right.
I'm not even sure the grandparent, the grandparents don't count for anything in this.
Well.
I mean, the, the hospital would just reach a point to start making decisions on behalf of the interest of the child.
Right.
But they're not gonna, the, the, the signature of the grandparents, I don't think amounts to much.
Right.
Well, I'm just trying to link it to this waiver.
I don't know, I don't know what's, yeah, and having a realistic, you know, plan.
I think we, by having the waiver sheet, we're meeting our insurance company's requirement to, for due diligence. I mean, we're, we're kind of putting people on notice that, hey, you know, you're, you're in a physical activity, or at the boats, or whatever it is, you could get hurt. Basically, that's all we're really doing.
But frankly, when you come into the rec, when you're signing in, you have no idea that you're signing a waiver, because no one reads that, they just.
Right.
I mean, pickleballers don't even sign it really, they just, you know, it's just, so I'm just, it's a something that needs.
We need to.
You need to look at that and address.
Alright, great, thanks.
Alright, public safety.
Uh, public safety, well, Brooke, made, made it look like, uh, she took a lot of time. No, I'm just saying, it's gonna make mine look awful skinny here.
Well, you made Motor Trend magazine.
Yeah, yeah, see that?
No. The moose.
Oh, oh, yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
That was, that was quite a, quite a show, and, I mean, a lot of times the moose gets hit and no one knows about it, but we put it on our Facebook page. And it got well over twenty thousand, um, views, and it's crazy. So, yeah, so, all the, um, Channel Nine and NH One and some of the Boston channels picked it up, and then Motor Trend magazine.
Is the individual involved okay?
Yeah, she's fine.
Is she a belly hit?
Um, no, she's from Ashland, she works at the Golden Eagle.
She wasn't on her cellphone at the time, I know.
No, um, no, she wasn't. Um, but we do, after that accident, we do remind people that traveling the speed limit, um, usually you don't have that type of accident. So, you can read between the lines there, um, but if you're, you know, that's, that wasn't a forty or fifty mile.
Yeah, I know that, I, she, this is down around the three mile?
Yeah, right at the bottom of, um.
I've seen that moose.
At the bottom of Hardy Hill, you go down Hardy Hill, and then there's another section of guardrails with a, um, stream running under it, at the very end of those.
Right. Yeah, I, I think it was about three or four weeks ago, I, coming home at night, saw the same moose standing there by the guardrail and confused, you know, it's.
So, and that's our second one this year.
Some things don't.
Second this year, yeah.
So, there'll be, um, you know, it's two fewer moose, and, uh, what the, the tourist industry can't afford to lose any more moose, but it's happening.
Unfortunately, it was very pregnant too, it was like within days.
Yeah, she was, she was full term.
Full term.
Really? Really?
Yeah.
Yep.
Wow.
So we lost.
That's kinda late, isn't it?
No, it's about right.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, I mean, the good part is no one got seriously hurt.
So you're saying the car was going faster than the speed limit?
It's just that, it's, I mean, look, it's not typical forty or fifty mile an hour, it's sexy. So, um, I haven't heard much from the bear this year, I don't know if anybody's.
I haven't seen it.
Heard anything.
Nothing in my yard.
Yeah.
Love bear? Love bear?
Bears.
One of the bears.
I see, I, I, I'm sure you're the one that you guys know who they were.
Smokey.
Tony.
But they should be, they should be creating destruction.
When they, it used past, we used to have, they were town pets.
Oh, yeah.
Do we, do we have the same best came back every year?
Yeah.
Are the clips back on?
Um, so that's, that's going on out on the street, our public safety academy. Um, we had our first one of the season last Wednesday, our second one's tonight, we had twenty-one people show up.
Wow, great.
And all of them, but one of them was a town resident, so it was a pretty good turnout.
Right.
Terrific.
So that, that was good.
Tonight, if you need your CPR, you can search for it. That's the plastic.
So, um, other than that, it's been all just, uh, getting ready for summer. Dave's been working hard on the fishing derby.
When are we stocking? Next week?
It should be a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
Fish should be here. Um, and the mountain did a fairly decent job cleaning up the fireworks from the winter. I don't know.
Yeah, we still, I did, we still have some, some stuff that you can see on the ground, but we were scheduled, I think we budgeted for a couple of loads of sand on the beach. Um, and I think we can take care of most of what's left, but there is still some, we're gonna have to talk about that in the fall with the mountain. Um, about how they wanna handle it next year, because it was not a good, it was not a good solution this year with the plastic.
They do fireworks more there now?
Yeah.
Next one's fourth of July.
Do we have any weddings with fireworks?
No, there's been no requests or no permits in there, so.
So, okay.
No comments because we're.
This brought up a thought that I am dealing a lot with wedding reservations, because a lot of times it involves corporate for a beach rental.
Right.
And I'm just thinking that I should have a copy, a master copy of when the fireworks are taking place, because that would have an impact, right?
Yeah, we would never schedule.
Okay, so I guess I would, we would never what?
No, we'd never schedule them on the beach or something like that.
The, the fireworks? Oh, okay. Alright, they go off from the bridge all the time?
So there's only one, fourth of July, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought there was a weekly fireworks show.
It's only in the winter.
Sometimes, sometimes a wedding party will ask for fireworks.
Okay.
And typically what's happened, and that's something else we're gonna have to talk about, is typically the barge would come in and go out in the following.
Okay, I got that information then.
No, no, no.
Our team seem to think that, that fireworks go off every week during the summer.
Not during the summer.
Okay.
They start Thanksgiving weekend and go through the winter.
Okay.
Just the fourth of July and the summer.
Got it, thanks.
Great, thank you. Alright, Jim?
Um, those two, uh, those, the sand is, if it's not here, it's in route. So, gang stay at the. Alright, um, but at any rate, uh, we're just getting into our cleanup mode. Road sides have been, uh, raked up and, um, roads have been swept. Um, we'll be mowing soon, obviously, and the roads are scheduled to be striped tomorrow morning. And it's usually a one-day process, so, um, what else have we been doing? Everything is, uh, everything is cleaned up, all piles are off vehicles, um, sanders are out, thank God, and, um.
Now it's kinda small.
Now it's kinda small. So, unless you have any specific questions for me, yeah?
Yeah, um, in the minutes last time we talked, there was a section written about, uh, the recycling center, and I wasn't here for the meeting. What, what have, what, can you give us, uh, we decided to do anything?
No.
In reading that?
No, we're, we're putting together numbers for the fencing, I hope to have it in the next one or two weeks.
But you have had conversations with Thornton?
I, I, I have had conversations with Thornton.
Are you aware of those conversations?
Well, I read the thing on the bottom that essentially suggested that maybe we get out of the recycling business and tell people they gotta take their stuff to Thornton, is that right?
They're, they're looking into whether or not they could, they think they could handle the additional volume.
And that they gotta take it?
If they can handle it, they'll take it, yeah. I'm not optimistic.
Right.
Because they're, they're pretty much maxed out right now.
Okay.
Um, we, next week, uh, we should have the preliminary plans from Joe Duchon for the new well building.
Okay.
Work, um, so that we can continue to move forward in rural development. And get that done by the end of the year.
Yeah, cause it, this is it, right? I mean, if we don't do the work this year, we're flum out of luck, right?
Uh, yeah.
Aren't we at the end of the time?
We are at, the end of the time is December thirty-first. They, there is the possibility of an extension, but we would have to request it, and it's not easy. So, we wanna get the work done by December thirty-first.
We wanna, I, I.
And work on by August.
We wanna get the work done before there's any chance of.
Anything stopping us.
Right.
By Thanksgiving.
Right.
Alright, all the equipment's working right, no major maintenance issues with anything?
At this point in time, everything's working right, we're, we, we have to do some repairs to the older, um, five-fifty Ford. Um, the, the body, the dump body is in, is in tough shape just because of. Salt. And, um, um, we're looking into that right, right at this point in time, but everything seems to be running very well.
And the sidewalk sweeper I've seen out, is that ours?
Yes, that is ours.
That's part of the Lamborghini?
That is the Lamborghini, yes.
Great. Hi, well, thank you. Calendar review.
We're gonna move, we're gonna move the next meeting, I think, yeah, to one o'clock on the twenty-sixth. April, right, uh, we're, no, we're May. Right.
You got it.
I, one o'clock on the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Right, got it, not a problem.
Alright, and then we wanna talk about what we wanna do for summer meetings, do we wanna go with one-a-month? And have more if we need to, or do you wanna just stick with regular?
You know, I, I would suggest that what we do is at the, i- is like, set the first one. On the, you know, and at that meeting, just make a decision whether we need the next one.
I agree with you.
You know?
Yep.
So like the, like the, on June tenth, we make a decision whether we need a meeting on June twenty-fourth. And then on July eighth, well, or.
We'll, we'll talk about July eighth, which is the day after.
Well, July eighth, I won't be here, so.
Well, that's a good time for a meeting.
Okay. Right. But anyway, some pattern, I, I don't care which one, or we can start with the next one, you know, on the, the nineteenth and decide if we need one on the tenth.
Alright, that works great, cause I can figure out on the schedule and see what we've got, cause if we have these road stuff to do.
Yeah, we'll see, cause if there's a lot of road stuff, there's just stuff coming back, then we need to have the meeting, so.
Yeah.
You know, I'm flexible enough that, at least for me, I don't need to know ahead of time when they are and aren't gonna be.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I think we'll need both June meetings, only because I wanna get the rural development project out to bid and.
Right.
I was thinking more towards July.
Yeah, the July and August ones are the ones that we generally.
Okay. Alright, great.
Um, there's also.
So you're around us most of the summer?
Yeah.
No major trips planned?
Yeah, well, I'm going to Canada, it's somewhere's in here, but it's not, I don't think it's gonna fall on any of these, when is it going? When am I going to Canada? Um, I don't know when I'm gonna go, not important today, yeah. Oh, it would be on July, it would be, I'll be back for it if I go.
I'll be back, so it's not a problem.
The memorial.
So I have to go to golf league, so I'll be back for golf league. But board stuff.
The, uh, memorial gathering for Nate is, uh, twelve-thirty on Sunday. I don't know if you guys are.
Is there someone in charge of this thing?
Um, it's a community thing, I don't know if there is a particular person.
I think nephew has been coordinating or something.
Yeah, it's a family and community thing.
Do we, uh, uh, either as, I mean, do we need to initiate a parent, you know, if nobody else does it, are you gonna be there?
No.
If nobody else does it, I will start a conversation along.
Well, no, yeah, they have that lined up.
If anybody would like to.
No, they have that lined up.
They do have that lined up.
Starting at twelve-thirty.
Okay, so they're gonna have some.
That's correct.
For anybody who wants to say some words about Nate.
They, they have that all planned, and I think Russ Carlisle is working on maybe being that person to get it started. Because he's called us for information.
Coming back for this?
I don't know, but.
They're usually back by this time.
Yeah, they're, they're around.
No, they're not around.
Or they're planning to be around.
Oh, okay, I think they're gonna come back. Alright, that's fine.
Yep, um, and then the office is closed Monday, May twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
From Memorial Day. Alright. Good.
Yeah, actually, we're going to see the play, Old Jew's Telling Jokes.
Yeah, I've heard of it.
Yeah. Alright, first half.
So this is like the Catskills revisited.
I hope so, I hope it's at least that good.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I, it's gotta be all those old jokes in at best, right, the Henry Jones stuff, right?
Exactly. It hurts when I do this, though, it is.
Yes, don't do this.
Alright. Alright, do we need to sign the warrant?
Uh, yes, I'm just getting.
Uh, I'll bring Bill up to speed on the Tecumseh sidewalk. W- one of the things that's come up in the core group meeting was to, in order for us to get, uh, make us pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly, is to actually work on the, uh, Tecumseh sidewalk.
Right.
Idea, Tom Gross is part of the core group, and he says there's a new group called, this new board at Tecumseh. I, I'm sorry, this new board at Village.
Right.
Who might be more receptive to working with us.
Okay.
And give us a land, so we're providing Tom with as much information as we can about how wide it should be, how long it should be, and things like that. So he's gonna meet with them on Memorial Day weekend.
Now, this would be a sidewalk for walking?
For walking and maybe for bikes, we, we don't know, we, we just have to get to the point of knowing that if we can get any kind of cooperation. But I would think it would be for walking and the inside, the bike lane would be.
Well, it, it's, what, what do you guys want? We, where do you want us to, I mean, we have looked at several different options. We've looked at both sides of the street. We've looked at having it down one side of the street until you get around the corner and then cutting across and, you know, so we've. And each time, we have run into, there are significant drainage issues in there. Um, if we are to build this, where are we gonna keep it clear in the winter? Um, because that is gonna, obviously, whatever we have in there for a sidewalk, we're gonna be moving material onto, um, Village Condos property. Um, we've, the corner itself, right, all the way down in front of Stone Property Management. There's, there are, there's quite a bit of ledge and, and big rocks in there on the Village side.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, again, are we, are we looking to cut through that?
So we don't, we don't have a path on the other side of the world near Village?
No, there's, there's no path that, there's no sidewalk at all on Tecumseh in, on either side of the road. Um, there's, Jim measured it, it's eleven-foot traveled lanes, so there's twenty-two feet of pavement there right now. Um, we, you know, I provided you with, uh, a possible cross-section, um, out of the pedestrian study. Um, it's not the one that they proposed for Tecumseh Road. But I think it makes the most sense that we would be looking to simply add pavement from the current edge, road edge, in towards Village Condos on that side of the road.
But this is on the Tecumseh Road side.
That's on.
Well, how about on the other side?
On the other side, um, there, there is no shoulder, there is no shoulder there right now, a very little shoulder.
So there is no path there?
And there's no path. And, and the drainage ditch, when you're on the, um, Stone Property Management side of the road.
Yeah.
No, 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 I, I, I'm sorry, when, you, you, what, what's the name of the, what, what do we call the road on Route forty-nine?
Oh, Valley Road.
Valley Road, is there, is path on Valley Road there? I don't think there is.
No, the sidewalk is across the street.
The sidewalk is across the street, there is a sidewalk.
There's a curb, there's a curb sidewalk.
Yeah, so there, so this is to get Valley Road connected back to.
Tecumseh Road to get them back towards the center of town, back towards Valley Inn.
Does it go back towards the Silver Fox?
Silver Fox, yes, right.
Connect back there.
Right, and, and that's been the problem is, first, the Village Condo Board didn't want us to do anything on their side of the road. So we went to the Forest Knoll side of the road, but the drainage ditch is right there, and there's no place to put it. You can't move it towards, because of Stone Property Management's building comes up so close to the road. And.
Right.
There's no place to move the water. Um, so if you keep it on the Village side, how do you build that sidewalk?
Well, would, would the other option be here, just to give Village something to think about? Suggest that we're going to make it a one-way road and cut it down with single lane?
And we have, we have proposed that before, and the town gave us a big, told us.
Well, no, 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 but there's a new, it, it, so they, that, that is a possibility. I mean, that road is not used that much, right?
But that's not a Village Con- that.
Oh, no, 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 I understand, it's a town solution.
Oh, if it's a town solution.
This is a town solution.
But I, but, but they recognize, if you, if you hinted that if you don't wanna cooperate to find some way to get people to walk. We may.
We may just.
Look at doing something along these lines, which means you're gonna be the ones who are inconvenienced. You know?
Yeah, one, one-way road would give us eleven feet to work.
I, I, I do have to say this, I, it's just an aside on this thing, I was in, in, in Sausalito, where my son lives in California. This is a bike-friendly town, built in, you know, on the town, I mean, the roads were built long before bikes were ever considered.
Yeah.
And they basically just do it with bike markings, and there is clearly, there, and bike, the bicyclers there, they essentially own the roads. And cars have got to basically, they gotta navigate around them. And I thought it worked quite well, I thought it was gonna be dangerous, but it wasn't danger, I didn't think it was dangerous at all. And the drivers are down to ten miles an hour, because you can't pass, you, you gotta ride behind a bike.
That's part of the process we're doing with the core group, we're investigating the cost of vinyl bike markings to determine whether we will become bike-friendly.
Right.
And instruct people that you're sharing roads with bicycles.
Right.
And doing a lot of that.
Yeah, oh, okay, so they're talking about that.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a big one, it's, what, what are they called, the thing, it's called a squash or something?
Yeah.
They have the logo for share with the bicycles.
Yeah, they have, right, they literally marked the road down there.
And they're these vinyl, they're vinyls that are painted, so they stay and they glow.
Right.
But Jim is pricing that out right now.
Right.
Just see if we can get at it. All right, so I think, I think that's, the way to go is down the village side, and maybe by just expanding, I can understand how we can't maybe do a discreet sidewalk, but we could expand the lane if we have, let's see what they say.
Okay, so I'm telling Tom Gross, talk to them about a one-way traffic pattern?
Well, no, that, that we would like to expand the road.
Oh, okay, so number one is expand the road.
As you said, expand it, which will give us more room for a bike path.
Right.
And a, and a walking path.
Now, do you wanna go with the full ten feet that they're proposing there?
I don't have the answer to that, I just.
Find out are they even willing to work with us. I mean, it's private property in the neighborhood.
Well, he already told me that he might be able to get four or five feet, but that's not the type of.
Well, if he could get four feet for a walking path, that's fine. Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be, again, if, if we're making it a walking, you know, I know that we're looking about trying to get everything eight foot wide, you know, on.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but that's on the, that was predicated on the base that bicycles are gonna be on it. If it was just people walking on it.
And the bicycles are sharing the road.
And the bicycles are sharing the road. I don't know if we need eight foot wide.
Yeah, but, let's see what kind of cooperation we get to start with, but, you know, I would, I don't know if I think it really works, but it's a start, it's an, it's an option to look at.
Yeah.
And then a potential if they.
And I, and I would say that we're not gonna clear these things in the.
Yeah.
I mean, this is summertime paths, and we call them paths, not sidewalks, paths.
And they don't have to be.
Well, they seem really as extensions of the, the edge of pavement. Not, they're not even gonna be separate, because you're gonna end up with, you're gonna end up with what we have behind the Black Bear. And we can't, those aren't even usable in the summer anymore.
Well, did you get Kentland's email on that?
Yeah, there's, there is the possibility, but that's not just, that you don't just do that. You don't just cut the trees down.
No, no, I, I understand.
I mean, there's a lot of money involved in it.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to be able to, to connect those.
Yeah.
Actually discontinue what's there and extend the edge of pavement even on, even on Snow's Brook Road. Okay. So can I have him talk about the one-way traffic pattern if they don't wanna expand it?
Yeah, without a doubt. I think it's viable, and it makes sense. If we're gonna go to this bicycle.
I mean, if we wanna, if we wanna encourage bicycle use, we're going to have to do it at the expense of drivers. There's no reason to, that, that, you know, half these roads, I mean, can't be one-way, so if we need to do it. I mean, there's not that much traffic here that I've got, and it's that big of an inconvenience.
And it's not that far out of the way if you've gotta go.
No.
What do you got, what do you got?
On the road to the next one and around the corner? Come on.
Yeah.
No big deal.
Okay.
All right, good. All right, on to old business.
Oh, are we gonna talk about the valves?
The valves.
The valves.
Yep.
So, now, I, I'm, I'm, I'm now confused on the residential, first, on the commercial stuff, they, they've all gotta be checked. I mean, I don't have any problem.
Yeah.
So on the residential, what, what are they finding that most of these valves are not?
There were, there were five of them that we found that do not need any type of testable backflow device. Or they had a non-testable device installed, and that was okay.
Yeah, right.
So those five are coming off.
All right, now, let's, let, we've got a bunch of homes, one of mine being, uh, that, that, um, have got valves. I know my house has valves. I don't think they're of the testable type.
Right.
Is there a way to, rather than quote have an inspector, that we could just take a picture, ask people, take a picture, send it in, and somebody will tell you when you've got a testable or a non-testable valve? And get these people off the list?
Sure.
I, 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 I think that'd be an easy thing to do, and then if it's testable, then you, you're stuck. I mean, you're now, you gotta do something, but, but I think a lot of the individual homes are gonna drop off, because I don't think any of these are testable valves.
Okay.
With the, the exceptions are the people that put in geothermal heating systems. Those could be testable valves. I don't know.
The irrigation systems, if your home has an irrigation system, it should have a testable, a testable backflow device on it. That is from the state.
Should.
It should. That, that is.
But again, if the irrigation system was put in fifteen years ago, would, would it have been required?
I, I don't know when.
Right.
I don't know when that standard would. That's why we're, these, these ten properties.
Right.
Two of them are, are commercial, the other eight are residential. If we could go in and look if they have a self, a totally self-contained irrigation system that is totally separate from the public water supply, they don't need anything.
Right.
They, they.
In other words, they gotta get a well or something.
A well or something like that.
Right.
So that's the type of, or we're looking at the same thing with the geothermals, okay? If the geothermal system is a closed system, then they don't need to be inspected again, they can come off the list. All right, so we have these ten, right, that are on the second page.
That not inspected or tested.
Not inspected or tested. And then we have the twelve properties where we have a registered private well, whether it was geothermal, irrigation, or not specified. Those are the properties that we are, we're, just wanna see what, what is there. If it is a system that does not need to be tested, they come off the list. If there is a irrigation system attached to the public water supply, or if it's not a closed geothermal, or if they have somehow cross-connected a domestic well with, with the public well.
We wanna see, who wants to see?
Rob, Rob Burhoe can, can go in and look.
All right.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Oh, okay, well, no, it matters a great deal to me.
Okay.
Because I'm not letting a state inspector.
No, 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 no state, no state.
Take a look.
No state people. This is our private.
Right.
This is our, our.
Well, I think as long as you say Rob Burhoe or something, you will take, you know, will come and take a look and let you know what you have or don't have.
That's right.
That's one thing, yeah. Because there, he is what I come to, I'm not gonna name names.
No, no.
There, there are lots of, there are several people that I run across that had these valves that ain't on your list.
Okay.
Because I don't know where that list came from, but I think it was.
The list came from when they were putting in the meters.
I know, but he missed a bunch, apparently, he may have missed some.
Yeah, and, and we can't, I mean, I can't do anything about that.
I don't know what I don't know.
Okay, so what's the next step with this?
So the next step is, these, these people with the wells.
Right.
We need to, we're either gonna call or send a letter to.
Right.
Okay, saying we, we would like to look in your home.
We'd like to have Rob Burhoe or Rob Burhoe or.
Our guy, come in and look in your home, and if we find that it is a closed system.
Right.
Irrigation or geothermal, whatever.
Right.
Then you're gonna come off, you come off the list.
He'll tell you whether, and we can tell, basically, he's going to tell you whether you, whether, whether you have any obligation to do this, to test.
That's right.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, I'm more comfortable with that.
Okay, and then those are the ones we have to get done by July first. Because the state, these are all registered with the state, so they are questioning us on what is there.
Right.
Okay, so we need to take care of this list by July first.
Right, that, that's the one that's, right.
The wells.
Yeah.
That's what they're worried about. Then we have these other ten who, our plumber, the town's plumber, when they were putting in the.
Right.
Right, noted them, so we just need, again, to have Rob go in or somebody go in. They have not been looked at yet.
Okay.
Okay, so these are the ones that we have until March of next year to do.
Got you.
Okay, so whenever we can contact them, whenever we can arrange it, we're gonna have Robbie go in.
Well, I'd ask Robbie if, if they photographed a copy of the valve, and they, you know, could he tell them that? I mean, I'd say.
Yeah, I'll ask him. Yeah, I'll ask him. Now, the one, we do have an issue because our regulation doesn't say anything about it. We know from talking to the property manager that the Wiggles have a well which is supplying their drinking water to their house right now, a private well.
Okay.
They also have town service to their property.
But they never connected.
Which is, well, it's connected to their irrigation system only right now.
That's.
But the Wiggles want to connect the public water to their drinking water and leave the well connected. We can't allow that. Because, because we have untreated water.
Right.
Being introduced potentially.
Basically, you can't allow, the, really, the bigger problem is you cannot allow the public water system to be connected to their irrigation system.
We would prefer that they flip-flop, that they put their well on their irrigation system and get their drinking water, their potable water, from the public water supply.
Right, no, but, but, but there, i- if they don't have a backflow valve, that irrigation system has got a risk of contaminating now your line.
Exactly, right, so, so I just, you know, I'll have a conversation with Mr. Wiggles.
Yeah.
But I, I just wanna make sure that I was, I'm okay with you guys as far as what I wanna tell him, which is, we prefer that you flip-flop in a plan, because you can't, and you can't.
Can you have a regulation at all that says you must give off your well?
No.
So he can stay with his well if he wants to. If he connects his irrigation system to his well.
Yes.
And drinks the water out of his well.
That's fine.
We could care less.
Yeah.
That's not our business.
I bet he's serious.
As long as we. Basically, his issue is, he is, right now, he's got the public water supply connected to his irrigation system, and unless he's got a testable backflow valve in there, that's a problem. And his choice is either to get his irrigation system connected to his well.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or, I don't know, he ain't got no choice. I guess we'll shut off his irrigation system.
Yeah.
Well, yes, and, and, but I wanna make sure that he doesn't move forward with connecting, you know, having a plumber go in and change anything within his house, which would connect his well with the drinking, the public water supply.
Right.
We gotta make sure that that doesn't happen.
Why? You've already got the, you see, my point of view is, you, you've already, the risk is the irrigation system. Adding the, and then putting the water in the house doesn't do anything. That's clean water. It's the problem, it's.
Yeah, but it's still untreated, and, and actually.
If he doesn't disconnect his well.
Right, right.
Oh, I'm assuming if he connects to the town water supply, it's got to disconnect.
No, yes, that's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm gonna tell him, is you gotta, yes, you can connect us, but number one, you gotta put in an RPZ because of your irrigation system.
And you gotta.
You've gotta disconnect your private water supply.
You gotta disconnect it.
That's right, yeah, that's all I wanna, that, we're talking about the same thing.
I, I, generally, I can't imagine a circumstance where somebody would want both their well and the public water system connected.
I don't understand.
No, I don't know why, I don't know why, but that's what, that's what his property manager has talked to Rob about doing.
Who's the property manager?
I, it's somebody from out of town. It's not a, it's not a local.
Okay.
Now, okay, so we're okay with these two lists in the July and March time?
Recreation Department donation for Fall Foliot Drive. We just have to.
You, there is nobody here to do it. You just can make a motion to accept it.
I don't know, what is it? Yeah, if you wanna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand dollars for the t-shirts for, uh, the fishing derby.
Oh, yeah. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Modern sewer line freeze ups. Pretty much got it there.
It is, is the sewer line on River Road functioning again?
Yes.
It is.
Okay.
Well, it was as of yesterday, I talked to.
Okay, no, I.
I talked to Mike Fergo and everything. We're not connected.
That's right.
He's not connected to it.
I mean, the, the, and, and that part of the problem is, is in talking to Dushon, is it's not only that, it, even getting everybody connected isn't gonna make any difference because of all intimate, the whole weekend uses.
Yeah.
We need some way to, to, to handle the fact that, that there is gonna be occasions with his two people on the whole line for weeks. I mean, that's a problem.
It's.
This is the sign, the sign, the one.
All right, all right, correspondence?
Um, just a couple of things. Paul Levitt, um, delivered this to me, asked that I, that I share it with you. Um, it is some information that he put together from his experience as a police investigator and, um, some of the experiences that he's had working with, uh, the FBI and US Attorney's Offices in the past.
Yeah.
Um, it was in response to David Britton's comments in the wigwag. Um, and he just wanted to give this to you as.
Comments in the wigwag relative to.
The investigation and results of the stone investigation. So you can read that at your leisure if you want, um, to look at it. I don't know if he has copies in there.
Oh, yeah, there are copies for everyone.
So if you wanna just take those, um, I have not.
Is there anything, I mean, that we should?
No, I didn't have an opportunity to read through it. I'll give Margaret.
Margaret, Dave, you make copies for everybody.
Okay, good, yep. All right, so I wanted to share that with you. Um, also, I, um, oh, he's trying to find a rationale why they're punishing.
Okay.
So.
Got you.
I, I, um, as a, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Municipal Bond Bank, we have been working with several communities in the state, um, and trying to improve the bond bank's bond rating so that we could improve interest rates, et cetera.
Yeah.
As part of this, uh, we set up a system where Standard and Coors has given us a, a rating indicator tool um, that allows us to put information in about different towns, um, to see what their, it isn't an official rating, but it's an indicator of what their rating would be if they went out for their own bond. I, I just wanted to share with you that we did Watergo Valley based on our financial information, and, um, our indicated rating is double A minus, which is, uh, one step below the bond bank's rating.
Yeah.
Um, and is still pretty good for a, for a very small town. That is investing, investment-grade bonds, but this is based on the financial information in our last audit.
Yeah.
Um, just, you know, for reference more than anything else, it's not official, but, uh, but I think it does show that we're, we're doing fairly well. So, I thought. And I will make copies and put in your box every year we get from, believe it or not, Employment Security. I'm not sure why they're the state agency that does this, but there is a, uh, community, uh, information profile that is put out. I don't know, have you seen these before? Um, but I'll put a copy in your box. We, we just got this, so. But it, it just has a lot of good, uh, factual information about the town, statistics and, and that sort of thing, and you can actually go on the Employment Security website and see this on any community, uh, same information on any community in the state.
Great.
So, that's.
All right, well, why don't we go into non-public at four thirty?
Is there any privilege before, or anything like that?
Right.
No, for, um, for the selectmen and any. I have another issue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, before we go in, it's real. The, um, I, I reminded me that Dave Britton wrote a kinda nasty wigwag article also on the pedestrian village study.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, essentially saying, gee, you know, if we have more volunteers in town, this, you know, this whole thing is a waste of money, which, you know, he's got a good point. I mean, I, I agree with him. Is there any, do we need to respond to that, do you think?
Well, I thought of responding to it, but the points he started taking were so varied and so it would, the response would be almost encyclopedic, because he started off by going at the town's responsibilities when things were clearly defined as ski areas. And the response that I would have come up with would have just been all over the place because the article was all over the place.
Yeah, I, I, the one issue that I take, I mean, he, he, he said, we don't need the brand of town. I, and I, I disagree with him there. I think trying to develop some sense of what this town is, is important. Uh, and, um, but I, I didn't know whether the, whether you think the best thing is to, to let it lie, or whether we should try to.
Well, you have a group working on it right now, and I think anything that they, any proposal that they come up with, I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna have public meetings or whatever to talk about that.
Bring whatever is being done in the. The core group is really working to bring whatever is being done in the committee to the public with some actions and some action items.
Alright, good.
To see that we're, we're taking this seriously and we're proceeding with it.
Yeah.
But, you know, the other, yeah, I, I just read the thing, it was all over the place.
Yeah. Right, I, I think we ought to leave it to the core group.
Alright.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Comes up with some concrete steps and then talk about it.
Okay.
Because they seem to be moving forward.
Alright.
There was one other thing before going to non-public. Jerry Dunphy's eightieth birthday is Saturday, the twenty-third of May. Was wondering, I got a phone call asking if we could do a resolution document from the Board of Selectmen regarding May twenty-third, like we have done in a couple of other instances. You know, the whereas, whereas, yeah, kinda that thing. And I just wondered if you guys would be available next week to sign it if I did one? If you would be interested in doing one?
Okay.
I will do that.
Alright.
That's all.
Excellent. Non-public. Oh, we gotta turn the camera off.
Yes, turn the camera off. Goodbye.
So he gets a resolution and breakfast at Denny's.
Go to his own motel.